Okay, I am going to be reporting on financials that I approved on July 26th, Resolution sixteen dash one zero two, as authorized by the board. This was a correction of Journal twenty sixteen dash twenty seventy seven, which had been incorrectly entered into the system as a journal entry, and was reversed out under Journal twenty sixteen twenty four thirty one. It was re-entered into the system correctly as a budget adjustment on Journal twenty sixteen twenty four thirty two. So that's financial. And the second action is, I approved on July twenty eighth, as authorized by Resolution sixteen dash zero ninety seven, an agreement with the Emerald Rose Corporation for use of the county parking lots during the zucchini festival, on July thirtieth and thirty first.
I look forward to that every year.
This week in the financials, we have several appropriation requests. One is for the Common Place Smart Grant Fund. We have two appropriations, supplemental appropriation requests for mental health. One is for a new claim system, and the calendar year sixteen shortfall based on a state fiscal year seventeen resolution. There's also a request from the Mental Health Construction Fund for the board office driveway and new driveway extension. A supplemental appropriation request for community development infrastructure loan, and a request for the Job and Family Services Public Assistance Fund for additional travel for the remainder of the year. Under cash transfers, we have a cash transfer from the general fund to the Public Assistance Admin Fund for the first quarter mandated share. In the encumbrances, we have a contract with CCAO for the Commissioner's Office for the Workers' Comp Group Retro Premium in the amount of nine thousand fifty-three dollars, and a contract increase for North Coast Paving in the amount of ten thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the Joga Board of DD. We have one travel encumbrance for the engineer, and one travel encumbrance for Job and Family Services. Under the vouchers, we have a payment of five hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty cents to Raniek Paving for road resurfacing.
You gonna call mental health and ask them to, or inform them of their spelling of the board is incorrect?
Yes.
Other questions? Can I have a motion?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution number sixteen dash one zero three, itemizing the financials for the meeting of August second, two thousand and sixteen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Quillen?
Mr. Quillen?
This is one of those days.
Oh, okay.
You're up. And welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the annual opportunity to be able to talk about the notes that we've gone out, this is a history of the notes since two thousand and nine. Basically, we went out for bid on the two million dollars last week, where you see four bids for the public communication and the county short-term paybacks. Our new interest rate, which was under one percent, which we thought was exceptionally good, which was zero point nine seven seven, which means we're going to rent that money for a year and pay back about nineteen thousand five hundred and forty dollars in interest. It's a little higher than we thought, but the market is what the market is. The fact that this is a two million dollar note, not a twenty million dollar note, is a good thing for the county, because it shows that we are very, very conservative in what we're trying to do consistently, and that's what this recap shows you. And I'm very happy, you've got some documents to sign, but I think it's a good opportunity for us to reduce that note on the numbers.
There was a spread on the offers, I mean, charging twice as much?
Twice as much.
So it's great to shop?
Yeah, yeah. And it's a good thing to go out there and shop, and the people we have helping me work very hard at that, because they've got all the connections with these entries. So it's a good opportunity for us to shop this money, and actually, it's a good one. Questions?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute the signature and no litigation certificate in connection with the two million dollar communication system note, Series two thousand and sixteen. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute the communication system note, Series two thousand and sixteen, in the amount of two million dollars.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Commissioner Quillen?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank your staff, everybody involved in that.
Yeah, it's a little bit of work, but it's more worth the time and effort to go then check the county. Thank you.
My pleasure. Hi, Jessica, how are you?
The first thing is an amended motion. Beth Kirkow put in her retirement resignation. Originally, she said September first, but that has changed. She wanted to, her last day to be the thirty first, so she can enroll in different benefits, Medicare and whatnot, upon her retirement effective the first of September. So her last day, she'd like to change from the first to the thirty first.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board amend the motion approved by the County Administrator on July eighth, two thousand and sixteen, to correct the effective date to read-accepted the retirement resignation of Beth Kirkow. Food services date to be effective August thirty first, two thousand and sixteen.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner White? Commissioner Quillen?
Next one is my newer hire. She joined us in the end of February. She's going to be preparing for a wedding, so she's requesting some time off without pay, Melissa Cardena. So we're looking at a total of twenty-four hours without pay, and that will, of course, extend her probationary period.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve unpaid leave of absence for Melissa Cardena, recreation and education assistant on August fifth, two thousand and sixteen, for eight hours, and September eighth, the ninth, two thousand and sixteen, for sixteen hours, to fully extend her probationary period, three days, twenty-four hours.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner White? Aye.
Thank you, Jessica. I think, yeah, where's G Center over there? It is popping.
Oh, it is. It's very busy. We were there for a director's meeting one day, and you could tell when the exercise group came in, and they started a boxing class too over there. We've been doing the Parkinson's boxing class, and right now, we moved from Ignite to the Taekwondo studio right by Joey's, but we started just a general boxing class, and for those that, we don't box each other. You spar with a, to be clear.
Especially since I was senior abuse the other day.
Yeah. You basically spar with a piece of equipment under the direction of the staff, but we just started that, and that's taking off quite well. I mean, I just did a review of the numbers for the first six months, and right now, we are at where we were at the end of the year last year.
Jessica, I have to comment on this whole class. I got a call here a couple of months ago from somebody, very well-respected manager that I used to work with at a previous job, and he's come down with Parkinson's, and he's been going to this boxing class, and it's really made a world of difference. And Sandy's so dedicated, when he was able to go to Florida for a couple of months, she was calling him down there to make sure he was doing some kind of exercise to keep him up. And when he did finally come back up after the winter, he can tell he'd kind of fallen behind some of his classmates, so it really does make a positive change in people's lives who are affected with Parkinson's.
Yeah, it does, and I think what we're trying to instill upon people, it's just not about recreation and busy work. We are looking at different diseases affecting the community, such as Parkinson's, such as arthritis, Alzheimer's, and we're looking at modalities to treat the symptoms of that. So the boxing isn't necessarily about recreation, but improving someone's parts of symptoms so that they can function better.
And they feel less frustrated after they box.
Clearly, clear. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Karen could not be here. She texted me last night, she said she had some kind of allergy going on, and she was concerned, and said, I can cover it, Karen, just get better, she works many, many hours, but I can cover this. The board took action, there's an individual who was the senior cook, who's no longer with the county, based on action of more than a couple weeks ago. Karen, looking at the organization, trying to do things as cost-effectively as possible, has concluded that they don't need the senior position for the cook, and they do have, they do have a full-time cook, and now what they're looking for is to hire a part-time cook, and apparently, she hasn't been the candidate, so she's just asking for the posting for a week, and asking to change the order. Is that what it is? She's saying, well, actually, she's saying it'd be okay to only post it for a week, but however we have to do it.
He's not an internal book, and she didn't send it to me as an account.
Okay, now, she just, I think she must have gotten some feedback where she feels it'll really fill relatively quickly. So the other action, I think, is to change the org chart, to remove references to senior cook, and I think also to, let me see, approve the revised description for the cook, and remove the reference to the number of hours. We're kind of going through some of the org charts, because they're not all uniform in the way things are described, so there'll be a few of these actions coming along, so when we're all done, all the departments within your hiring authority will have org charts that are uniform of how they're describing.
County Home is requesting the board approve the revised organizational chart that removes the position of senior cook number fifteen oh seven, and includes additional information regarding the positions to be effective August second, two thousand and sixteen. The County Home is requesting the board approve the revised job description for the position of cook number fifteen oh three, that removes any reference to the number of hours to be effective August second, two thousand and sixteen. The County Home is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of part-time cook number fifteen oh three dash one. This position will remain posted until November.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner White? Commissioner Quillen? Aye.
Martin, Joe?
Good morning. How are you? This is, um, Mayor's Guild Commissioners to give us the opportunity to attempt to hire a different type of employee for the work that has to be done in our office. Hiring an administrative assistant doesn't really cover the workload that we need this person to do, so we're asking for a change in there, so that we can advertise for someone with the talents that actually apply to the job.
Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are all related, aren't they?
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve the creation title and job description for the position of full-time office coordinator number nine, fourteen oh five, to be effective August seventh, two thousand and sixteen. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve the revised organizational chart that removes the position of administrative secretary number fourteen oh four, and the addition of office coordinator number fourteen oh five, to be effective August second, two thousand and sixteen. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of full-time office coordinator number fourteen oh five. This position will remain posted until November.
I'll make those motions.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner White? Commissioner Quillen? Aye.
I'm not supposed to even do it.
I can't hear that.
This is one of our emergency repair clients, and under the terms of the old grant funds that we used to have, we were allowed to give up to eight thousand dollars for emergency repairs, and under the old terms, we did not collect anything back, because the money came from the state, so after a certain period of time, it goes away. So no money came back to us, but she did stay in the house for the five years that was required, so I was getting canceled.
So this is closing it down.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute dissatisfaction of mortgage force, that mana the guard, as the conditions of the mortgage under the Community Development Block Grant Government Income Fund, in the amount of eight thousand dollars, has been satisfied.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Quillen? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, this is, yeah, this is the original.
Confused by where you would see this.
Isn't that here?
He's gonna hear. Okay.
Well, yeah, you talked to him about this.
This is somebody he worked for before, and then got relocated out of town, and he had an opening, and she's back, and she applied for the position.
The Dog Warden is requesting the board approve hiring Patricia Evans to the position of part-time shelter attendant number sixteen oh seven dash one, to be effective August ninth, two thousand and sixteen, at the rate of eleven dollars twenty-four cents per hour, with a one-year probationary period.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner White? Aye.
Morning, Nick.
Morning. Did you guys get the NOAAAC long-range condition report for our county?
No, I didn't receive any. I have a copy in my desk. Let's take a look before you leave, and see if you guys have seen it, if it means anything to you. I was looking through it earlier. If they do a, they did a full report on what they thought the conditions of our roads were, I'm kind of curious what you guys would say about that.
They settled it to each of us individually, which all at this address, and the first thing that popped out at me was, each envelope costs six dollars and eighty cents to send. By the way, man, you sent three envelopes from the same location to the same location, instead of one that might have weighed a little more, and that would have cost twelve bucks instead of eighteen something, you know? But the way they go through money, I don't think that's.
This stuff can cost a bunch to produce, I'm sure. So I'm thinking about driving around the county and producing my own report on all those roads, so, and then I'll do it on eleven by seventeen, three brimmed binder, and send it back to her.
Matt's coming. Oh, Matt is coming?
Anyway, sorry for the side drag, but yeah, the three of us, we had to, as far as the conditions of the road, it would be meaningful to you, so.
We're here this morning to ask you to prove.
Put the camera, you can wait, I'm sorry.
For the place where the Cut Road Bridge, it's a decrease in the contract of six thousand eight hundred and five dollars and twenty-five cents, and just items that were incidentally, you know, ups and downs, minor ups and downs in the contract. Derek, and a wonderful job.
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve and execute change order number one, final decreasing the contract with CIR Incorporated for the replacement of the Cut Road Bridge, structure seventy-two, dash zero zero point four nine, in Hampton Township, in the amount of six thousand eight hundred and five dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll make that motion, second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner White? Commissioner Quillen?
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Nick, feel free to wander back there if you want.
Okay.
Just laying my desk. Morning, Glenn.
Morning.
Morning. On the other.
Eighteen's Teresa's probation, so she's a couple of weeks off, and she had plans before she started, and we still extended her probation period.
She's very charlatan.
Yes. She's getting into all the different offices on the Internet and Internet, learning all the different, what they all do and everything, so it's really, she, I don't want to say hyper, but she's very.
Energetic.
Yeah, yeah.
Learn and. Very positive, yeah.
Did you see the new technology, or the new thing that's out there right now? Started by two less than twenty-five-year-olds. It's called a skim report, and so they're creating a, a front page, if you will, for your iPhone, your phone you're carrying around, okay? It's your, your skin for your phone.
Yeah.
Which produces the highlights of news, and so I'm thinking, wow, we could have a skim report for the county.
Yeah. To, to, yeah, yeah.
And you brought it, brought it up when you were talking about Internet and all that sort of stuff.
Cool.
Anyway.
The Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve unpaid leave of absence for Teresa McKinstry, part-time general communications department support operator, for the period September twenty-seventh through September thirty of two thousand and sixteen, and October third through October seven, two thousand and sixteen. This will extend her probationary period forty in one half hours.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner White? Commissioner Quillen? Aye.
You want to say something?
You want to add something, Dale?
James from Great Lakes Chiefs?
Yes. Hi, I'm McLeish.
Ken.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Blake Reer.
Hi, I'm McLeish. Nice to meet you.
Skip White.
Nice to meet you.
Good morning. Nice to meet you.
As I, last session, we talked about this, this is where we had the freezer go down at the county safety center. Monday, we were able to contact different agencies. We started moving all the food that we could down to the county home. They moved stuff, finding out that we didn't have enough room at the county home, contacted.
They just, the sheriff had just got the large shipment of food.
Contacted DES, Department of Emergency Services, Dale Wedge, and their department started contacting people, and we started contacting people to find out where we could get freezers, many agencies within the county, working together, Great Lakes Chiefs, Ken, came through with a forty-nine-foot freezer, refrigerator, tractor, trailer, and they were able to bring it over, and Maintenance Department along with the kitchen staff started loading everything with that. We were able to get the parts overnighted, and then get it repaired, and Wednesday, we were able to pull everything out and put it back into the jail kitchen, along with the jail staff, the kitchen staff down there, Lieutenant Rose, I stand, Joe, Karen, Nicola, and her staff, Dale Wedge and his staff, and even the Great Lakes Chiefs, their staff came out with the trailer, they showed us how to operate it, and what kind of diesel to put into it, and kind of watch it, and the whole works, and, you know, county agencies along with the private sector coming together to save a lot of money on this was tremendous, tremendous, great, and I was glad to be part of that, that team, and everybody, like, really took major steps forward, and that was much, much appreciated, especially with Great Lakes. They gave me a cell phone where we could contact them twenty-four hours, if something happened, we could contact, I want to say Dan, Dave?
Yeah, I live by Dan's Evergill.
Dan, I, where I could contact them at any time, if something went wrong, so.
A shout-out to Dale Wedge, who's hiding in the back there, he made the initial contact, I think, with Great Lakes Chiefs, and pulled us all together, so, just a great example of Joga County acting like family, pulling together and taking care of business.
Along with, I think the sheriff's back there, sheriff and his staff assisting with everything possible, so, like I said, it's just a tremendous effort of everybody coming together.
Good, thank you. Good, good job. And so, for anybody who's wondering, this is a resolution honoring Great Lakes Chiefs, and I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas on Sunday, July twenty-fifth, the Joga County Safety Center freezer started to have problems, and it was no longer freezing, causing great concern, as a large food delivery of around five thousand dollars had just been received, and whereas, Joga County Maintenance Department contacted, the county home began moving as much as they could to the freezer space there, but there was not enough space. Department of Energy Services contacted Great Lakes Chiefs to see if they might have a freezer that could be used, and whereas, Great Lakes Chiefs offered a forty-nine-foot refer tractor-trailer unit and delivered it to the safety center, where kitchen staff and maintenance workers moved all the remaining food into the unit before any loss, and whereas, Great Lakes Chiefs Company unit allowed for the freezer to be repaired, and once brought to temperature, all the food was put back in place and back to normal operations, and now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Joga County Board of Commissioners do hereby honor and recognize Great Lakes Chiefs Company owner John Eppert, and employees Ken McLeish, Rick Sokolowski, Paul Armond, Dan Nippenberg, and Senior Dan Nippenberg, hopefully you pronounce those names properly.
You did.
And Noel Lennon, you guys have, have to get simpler names. And whether or not, we have been working together with county agencies on time-sensitive situation, providing a positive outcome and savings to Joga County. Be it further resolved that this resolution become part of the permanent record for the Joga County Commissioners, and outside of the, the resolution, the board just thanks you. I mean, it was, it was this kind of thing that makes, that separates Joga County from other places, where we just all work together, and we have these kinds of things, so thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could be part of it.
Carol walk around and.
Ms. President?
Oh, I move.
Thank you, Mr.?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Quillen?
Aye. Thank you again, thank you company.
Thank you.
Dan, before you start, I want to ask, yeah, Matt, how did, how did dog adoption?
It actually went great. It's, I, I thought that Glenn was gonna talk longer and use.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I was late at the meeting, I apologize, but Glenn actually was after me. No, it actually went great. We did six of ten adopts. We only had ten dogs up for adoption, but sixty percent of our kennels were adopted out, so we did six adoptions, and the adoptions came from all areas. We had someone come in from Parma, someone come in from Eastlake, and then Ashtrabula, and then we had three local adoptions too, so it was actually a great event. It's probably the most adoptions we've done in the past three or four months, so it was a fabulous thing, thank you very much.
Thank you. I didn't want to, I hadn't seen you since. Yeah, no. I was gonna get here earlier, like I said, I thought Glenn was.
Yeah. Of course, Scott doesn't want to change.
Thank you for recognizing Great Lakes in their effort. Many of us have had occasion when your home freezer goes out, and you realize that the meat is thawing, the ice cream melted, and you end up throwing some things out. In two thousand and fifteen, the jail served over a hundred and forty-seven thousand meals. We have a lot of food on stock. When something like the freezer goes out, it can get very expensive. And again, they stepped up. My mom always said, when somebody does something, to help you out, you need to thank them. You guys did, but letting them know that, I appreciate it. Purpose here, we're here for the, another prisoner housing contract, this time with the city of Beachwood. We anticipate this will be what we call some of our smaller contracts, an occasional use contract, it reads the same as the other contracts we've had with other municipalities on the side.
These contracts allow us to discern the types of prisoners we take?
We get to discern them. If there's any additional cost over and above the per diem rate, that is billable, should a.
Excuse me, Glenn?
Yes, sir.
Can you hang around after session? I need ten minutes of your time.
Yes, sir.
Do you have time?
So example, special medical attention stuff.
So you, you, we have the capacity, capability to charge extra, or maybe not take the person if there's extenuating circumstances for.
Absolutely.
Health issues, so on and so forth, but not because we don't want this prisoner over that prisoner because of their behavior, or we do have.
We, we reserve the ability to basically refuse and/or send back. We, we reserve the ability to basically refuse and/or send back a prisoner for any or no reason. And, you know, certainly we can come up with reasons where, you know, health issues, things might not be appropriate that they'd be housed at our jail. But in the unlikely hood, we would have a rash of arrests or something like that come up where we need our own space within the population.
The reason for asking, and I'll throw this out, maybe it should be offline, but we're not, we're not supposed to have a conversation outside of this meeting. This topic came up regarding our youth detention center down in Portage. And so we were talking, right now, it's just Portage and Jogger County. Like 50% of the facility is empty, most of them. And so there was some thought about following your model and opening it up to the outside, but there's a lot of concern about getting the wrong element into that group. So if you get some really bad behaving kids mixed in with some kids that are not, you know, that are just on the edge, whatever, we didn't want to mix those types of folks.
Jail, adult jail, there are classifications of inmates, ranging from minimum to maximum. And we typically house mediums, up to minimums, up to minimums, inmates for other communities. We have gone to maximum type, but again, there are individual, individual cases you look at what, what is the conduct of the person. In the case where you're talking, you know, it does go without saying, if there's a reason they're in jail or a detention facility, the behavior and whatnot doesn't conform to societal norms. So you are going to get, you're going to get something.
Would your model be something, you know, that we could look at? Would it make sense to do that?
Would be happy to talk to your ship, you know, how we go about doing it.
If you look at number one right under the contract, it says that we can refuse and return. It's good language to use either whether chair or board.
Okay, that might be something to look at. I mean, you guys are doing a nice job and it seems to be working. Might be a model that we could use as an option. I mean, I don't know where this might go.
We have an inmate for last night, mistaken hospital. We have provided garden, okay? But that's all extra billing to the contract. And so our time, medical costs, whether doctor, emergency room, et cetera, as well as the per diem, that all stay, that's billable to them. A medical emergency like that, they were subsequently released and brought back, they have one, didn't rise to level to warrant it, we're sending them back now, you know?
So what did you want to?
People can have health issues, come on. I think that this could have been a diabetic reaction. But yeah, that clause is, the number one clause, the first item is, that's Jogger County's protection.
And where do we stand right now, capacity-wise?
Today, we're a little over 130 on 182 beds. It does fluctuate. Certainly, weekends can go up some. We pay a little bit more during the RNC when we house for Kiahawata County. But again, being at 180, 182, in 182 beds, you have to have the right mix, combination of things. And we do hold room for Jogger County. I don't want to ever be in a position where I told the courts, no, you have to delay sentencing to someone that needs to go to jail or a police officer, deputy sheriff, who has made a determination, given the crimes the nature on the street, and that person needs to go to jail and they have nowhere to take them. We've seen that occur in different regions. We don't want that to happen in Jogger County. What do you do with, arrest somebody for being a violent, intoxicated person and have no jail to pay them to?
That's why these cities all have these contracts because you can't get them in in Kiahawata County, so they want a backup so they can make sure they go to jail.
Right, well, this person in your car. Take them, drop them off.
Take them to Scott's house.
Now that the bridge is fixed.
Yeah, now the bridge, if the bridge is fixed by your house, we can take them right over there.
Okay, thanks.
The sheriff's office is requesting the board approve the execution of board of prisoners by in between the Jogger County Board of Commissioners and the city of Beachwood.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. McLeish.
Aye.
Mr. McLeish.
Aye.
Thank you.
Beachwood, you know, we're the higher class of criminals.
They got the money.
White collar crime. I get a lot of white collar crime out of there.
We're on track for our 1.1, 1.2 million per diem. All right, that's six months.
Did you get any of the protesters?
No, and by design, we took inmates in advance of the RNC and already sentenced, classified, et cetera, over to allow space in the Cleveland facility for, for example, the 18 that were arrested, who are unclassified, et cetera, will have to appear in court. It would be, logistics would be crazy for them, so it just made sense. It was the known command. Take the new one.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hello, Michael.
Good morning, everyone.
Hi, Mike.
I'm here today to ask, get permission to advertise the whole, the public hearing for MODA, where you have the program for 2017. Questions?
The transit department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise to hold a public hearing for the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT Rural Transportation Program, calendar year 2017, operating in capital's grant proposals to be held Thursday, September 8, 2016, at 9:30 a.m. Notice that this public hearing will be advertised on August 4, 2016, and on the Capitol.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. McLeish.
Aye.
Mr. McLeish.
Aye.
Mr. McLeish.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Do you know the business, any questions?
I see Matt is still here, so did you want to address us on some issue?
No, no, I was like, I apologize, I was late. And so I figured I'll sit here for the extra 15 minutes.
Because he got to try to get your hours in. Get your credit.
I was actually down, I have a ticket to Wright in Chesterwind, so I was there and then I came here. I thought I'd be on time, but I guess not.
I saved the trip.
Ticket to Wright in Chesterwind?
Yeah.
Tickets to Wright in Chesterwind.
Ward Road.
We don't even know the details.
No, I'm just giving you the street.
But thank you for your efforts and your class efforts on that adoption Saturday.
Well, thank you guys for the approval of it. I think it, it was a hit. So like I said, 1803 and all that, did the follow-up and stuff. So 60% is probably one of the higher percentages in the, in northeast Ohio with all the shelters and stuff, so it was great.
Thank you.
I moved to a germ.
And you approved her, right? I just kind of make sure.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just making sure.